PPS.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves into the language into which they will be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Hola y muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicio de interpretación en español, voy a estar ubicado acá en la parte del fondo de la sala, muchas gracias.
Dobleveche, me llamo Larissa, yo voy a traducir en ruso el idioma si a alguien necesita ayuda.
Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on? This does not include individual action items listed on tonight's agenda.
So, I have three items, but only one that is a question for staff and I will let them know during the break.
Okay. Tonight's meeting format will be a little different from usual. We will start with the superintendent's report and public comments, and then we're going to recess from the regular board meeting and move to the Mazama Conference Room for a work session. After we adjourn the work session, we'll reconvene back here to resume the regular meeting. During the work session, we're going to be talking about the racial equity lens that has been refreshed, and we will have a budget work session. I should warn you, some of that work session is going to include table work, small group work around tables, so it will likely be difficult for the audience to hear, but this is going to be the first, the first time that the board has a chance to kind of get its hands dirty on budget development. And then following that, we'll return back here for the remainder of the regular board meeting. Okay. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report?
Well, good evening, directors and viewing and present audience. It's been an exciting last couple of weeks from a weather standpoint. We did call a snow day last Tuesday based on some icy road conditions and forecasts. I want to thank a lot of people who go into assessing our weather situation and a lot of careful sort of thinking about that, in particular, our transportation department, our inclement weather team, Deputy Superintendent Hertz. I know this past weekend we were monitoring the weather carefully and we always make the call during our team conference call at five in the morning, so we do have our process on that decision-making posted on our website. But just to name a few steps that we take, when we start to learn that inclement weather is in store, our drivers begin scouting out bus routes and head out about three in the morning to monitor conditions on our bus routes and report back to our transportation director, which becomes part of our information. Our inclement weather team, which includes representatives from transportation and business and operations and facilities and communications and our chief of schools, our security services, get on this early morning conference call. And we share out our best intelligence at that time period. We work in collaboration with neighboring school districts as well as some of the colleges and universities and meteorologists as we make a decision. So, once made, we do have sort of an apparatus and communication strategy. We do have email, texts, and robocalls, as well as post that information on our homepage, web banner, Twitter, Facebook, translated into five languages. So, just, it's a good time to sort of review what our typical process is. We do work with the media carefully to make sure that families have the earliest possible notification. Make-up days, they don't appear to be required at this point, so we will need to determine if we have to schedule any of those make-up days at the end of the school year. If the pattern continues, I think we'll be okay.
Remember the, remember the request not to make predictions about weather?
Yes, I'm learning. Part of the Portland culture here is just not to speak of the weather, so, in the hopes to not jinx it, so, thank you for that reminder. So, we want to talk about our students' achievements. It's important to recognize many of their outcomes and wanted to focus this evening on that as a topic. This is Beaumont Middle School, Beaumont Middle School Jazz Band, which finished first place in the fifty-sixth, fifty-seventh Annual Clark Jazz Festival in Vancouver, Washington. So Beaumont has long had a strong music program and their winning streak and recognitions continue, so kudos to the Beaumont Jazz Band. Not to be outdone, the Lincoln High School and Grant High School Constitution teams once again are headed to national finals in Washington DC. Kudos to them. This is perhaps one of the longest-running rivalries here in PPS. This year Lincoln won the state We the People competition, the twentieth such title for them, and Grant, which has won it in the past two years, finished second. So both teams are headed to our nation's capital at the end of April, April 26th to 28th, to compete for the national championship, which Grant incidentally won last year. So PPS is keeping a strong tradition there and we will wish them both much luck representing and hope that one of them brings home the prize once again. Thank you. Benson, Benson High School, there's a lot of talk, a lot of meeting, a lot of engagement going on about this exciting opportunity we have to rebuild it. So, we continue to move forward with our planning process to modernize the Benson campus. There will be a complete presentation at next week's board meeting, one of the main events, but here's just a couple of quick progress notes. Reminder, this is a very complex project. It has a lot of moving parts, some are still evolving, but we have done a very large number of engagement sessions, including many of the groups that have been involved for some time. This includes the Benson Design Advisory Group, reviewing architectural concepts, every program and multiple pathways to graduation and other campus programs. Benson DAG has received messaging and updated plans to consider in the upcoming modernization proposals. MPG will be meeting with the Benson DAG and the Steering Committee and Design Group continues to meet regularly to get updates from the architect. So in all of these listening sessions, and I've had a chance to be at every single one of them with members of the multiple pathway programs, there's been just a few themes I want to list out here and a full report will be shared with the public in the coming week, but one of the things that has clearly emerged is that location is critical. Benson's transfer location is a major benefit to all students who come from all over the city to attend classes, programming and support services. And transportation options are one of the reasons. The fact that it is on a hub with bus lines and Macs are essential to our students who participate in these programs. One other theme is that childcare is important on or near the campus and that Benson as a whole campus can continue to do more in its efforts to make sure it's an inclusive environment for all program students. At our most recent meeting of the Benson Modernization Steering Committee, we heard a presentation from the design firm. This doesn't necessarily represent a final design recommendation, it's just up there to be illustrative, but they are tasked with arriving at different options to meet as called for in the board's resolution, alternatives and possibilities for how to move forward. So, we're continuing to study a variety of those options and those will be presented to the board in the coming week, so stay tuned for that important conversation. Visioning. We had our second two-day meeting of the Guiding Coalition at Franklin High School recently. Thank you, all those folks who were present. We're starting to narrow in on a future graduate portrait, an adult portrait as well, calling out both those skills dispositions that we want to see for our future graduates, as well as the kinds of competencies and characteristics we believe are important to the adults that work with our students. Some themes that are definitely emerging as attributes for our students are areas like critical thinking and empathy and the importance of effective communication, an ability to be innovative and creative, and also lots of important discussions about the kinds of system shifts and the kind of educational programming that will be required to support those kinds of attributes in our students. We've heard a conversation around our campuses serving as community hubs, not just as schools but as places where wraparound supports and services can be made available. We've also been informed along the way with participation in some learning journeys, so we've had a number of folks who have had the opportunity to visit some innovative programming to see how other school systems and other school settings are thinking about these questions, and so we're looking forward to another opportunity to do that with members of the community. So these meetings, as well as dozens of other smaller engagement sessions, are helping to provide the school district with some really invaluable input. We're really appreciative of the community's input in this visioning process, as many of you here can probably attest, these have been, you know, really energizing, highly productive sessions and are anxious, of course, to see how this all begins to continue taking shape. And some of our most engaged participants have been our students, sharing their hopes, their dreams, and for themselves, but also for all those future students who will be coming through Portland Public Schools. At this last Guiding Coalition session, we featured a student panel. It was sort of the highlight by all accounts for our gathering on that Saturday at Franklin High. So, we have more community meetings scheduled in February and March, including four large community meetings. We hope that folks will take a look at our calendar posted on our website and make their way to participating in some of those sessions. Quick commercial about some of my own time out and about. As you might be aware, I'm an elected member of the Executive Committee of the Council of Great City Schools, elected by peer school board members and superintendents from around the country. We had a recent meeting, our agenda focused, just so folks don't think I'm not working, we had report outs on current research efforts, we had our task force on student achievement and professional development efforts around the country shared out, we had school systems sharing their male of color, My Brothers Keeper efforts, there was a bilingual education EL task force where folks shared out, and then the Leadership Governance Management and Finance Task Force also had an opportunity to share out. It's the task force that I get to sit on, so it made for a very full two days. I thought our agenda packets were thick, the council's board agenda packet was six-hundred and forty-seven pages thick, so we needed two full days to get through it. If you haven't already heard, and you should have, because I think we've been flooding the airwaves, but the Successful Schools Survey is underway, started on February 4th for families and students. There's been a lot of promotion through our polls, emails, principal reminders, texts, and translated posters up at every school with a QR code that should make it easy for many to get there. The staff survey will launch a week from today on February 19th as well, so this is part of our efforts to begin to learn some initial information about how our broader community is perceiving culture and climate across the district, which will help to establish some base metrics in those areas and some important data. So our board passed that resolution that February is Black History Month. All around school, all around the district, schools are hosting special events to honor the month. I'm going to read off just a few examples of some creative ways that our students and school communities are celebrating, not a comprehensive list. Things like at Roosevelt High School, they held their Fourth Annual Hoodies Up event to memorialize Trayvon Martin and other black boys and men. This photo is from that event. At Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. School, there was a global celebration that includes Black History Month, but also Lunar New Year and the school's Latinx students. Alliance at Meek held a Black History Month Assembly and a soul food lunch. At Franklin High School, among their many events was A Love Affair with Black Hair, and an event aimed at empowering student voice called Listen Up, Stand Up, Speak Up. At Lincoln High School, the Critical Race Studies class has covered the school's hallways with posters of Trayvon Martin in an event titled Say His Name. And Arlita is starting and launching its first-ever Black Student Union. Well, why is it so important that we take the time to recognize Black History Month? Well, it's perhaps best that we hear from one of our students directly, so in an effort to incorporate student voice here at the board meeting, I would like to invite up one of our dear students, Ms. Sarah Steele from Jefferson High School, who happens to be student body president and is very active in the Black Student Union, and as you may be familiar, has a passion for social justice and has the goal of attending a historically black college or university. So, I'd like to take personal privilege to have, invite her up and better have a student describe for us what it means to have a Black History Month and how to keep it alive.
Okay, my name is Sarah Steele and this is what Black History Month means to me. Black History Month is a time of celebration, a time where black excellence in every form can be recognized and appreciation should be on the forefront of everyone's mind, in the workplace, in school, and in your own lives. But it also leaves a place for manipulation. It's a time where people can feel they have done enough by appreciating us twenty-eight days out of the year. It creates a sense of comfort in the complicity and not caring that comes the other eleven months. That in itself is why I am able to come up here and share my voice on this same microphone that cut me off just a few weeks ago. This time to speak is equally appreciated, but my blackness has not changed, the month of the year has. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and her own works. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to continue with student and public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for a student comment?
Yes, we have two. Marcos Turner and Desiree Niyong.
All right. Good evening. My name is Marcos Romero Turner, and I'm eighteen years old, and as of two weeks ago, I'm a proud mid-year graduate of Mount Scott Learning Center. And I want to thank the superintendent and the board for supporting successful contracted schools like Mount Scott. And I also want to thank Deputy Superintendent Yvonne Curtis and Chief of Schools Craig Quayar for visiting Mount Scott this past fall to meet and listen to students like me, and I'd like to share a little bit about my story, so. I've always struggled with anxiety and anger issues due to the fact of never knowing my real father and having my mother abandon me at the age of three, but I was fortunate enough that my grandparents stepped up and raised me the right way, and they really invested everything they had for me to push through school. And my grandparents were really concerned about me going to a larger traditional school, they knew I wouldn't last very long with the big classrooms or the, and all the distractions, but we were desperate looking for the right fit for me. And luckily, my grandparents discovered Mount Scott Learning Center and it ended up being the perfect fit for me. Just entering the building at Mount Scott, I felt like coming home and I felt very safe, so it was very, very important to me. The small class sizes, the one-on-one help and the teacher's attention, and the care for each student definitely made a difference for me. Mount Scott Learning Center has encouraged and supported me in my interest in entrepreneurism and allowed me to grow in and out of school. And over the past two years, I've been very fortunate enough to be connected with several people in the business community. I've been mentored regularly by the co-founder of Digital Trends Corporation, the owner of Portland Gear, and other local entrepreneurs, and Mount Scott definitely gave me the confidence to pursue these relationships. And last summer, I was invited to participate in the Portland Gear's Brand Camp at one Best Presentation, and shortly after that, I was able to attend Young Entrepreneurs Business Week at University of Portland and Oregon State University. I feel these opportunities would not have been possible without Mount Scott Learning Center. Just a few years ago, entering high school, I said I wanted to go to college and now it is actually happening, and in fact, I'll be the first in my family to go to college. I already have a full four-year scholarship to attend one local university, and I'm a finalist for another four-year scholarship to attend another local university. And overall, I've gone through a lot in my past and Mount Scott has helped me overcome many of my challenges, and no matter what any student's situation is or struggles are, they deserve the opportunity to be successful, and Mount Scott has definitely given them, or given me that opportunity. I know there are so many other kids out there like that struggle or will struggle in a larger traditional school, and that's why Mount Scott and other schools like it are so important. It's where we find hope, it's where we feel safe, and it's where we experience success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Desiree Niyong. I am seventeen years old and a senior at Southeast Campus of Rosemary Anderson High School in Lenz. I want to thank the superintendent for making alternative education available. I left my formal school for several reasons. I felt like I was falling behind with my credits and I wanted and needed some one-on-one time with my teachers, but the classes were so big that it wasn't really an option and my schools wasn't diverse, no one there looked like me. My mom graduated from Rosemary Anderson High School a year early and I liked the idea, so I started there at the beginning of the school year. I'm so glad I did, I'm doing so much better there. I'm amazed at all the support I have and how much it makes a difference. My classes are smaller, so my teachers really worked with me to get ahead. It's not just the teachers either, all the staff members have my back. I know they love me because I see and I feel it. Many of my classmates look like me, they understand me, and they also want to see me succeed. There are other opportunities besides classes. There are programs to help me discover what I want to do and grow so that it's less intimidating for me to plan my transition in June after graduation. I'd like to attend a historical black college or university to study sociology. I want to be a social worker and help troubled youth. In a couple of weeks, I'm traveling to the south to visit HBCU colleges with Rosemary Anderson staff and students. There are so many reasons why Rosemary Anderson High School is a better school for me. The smaller size, real relationships with the teachers and other adults, researches that helped me with internships and jobs and a sense of family and belonging. It's not just about getting a diploma. I'm learning how to take better care of myself in many ways. I want more for my life, to do things I didn't even know I could do. I remember starting at Rosemary Anderson and I didn't think I would fit in because the school was so small. I was so used to big places with lots of people around me. I started getting more involved with, I started getting more involved and built some great relationships with other students and staff. I know I came to the right place when I got my first progress report. I had all age for the first time in my life. I know there are a lot of students like me who can do those things too. I want them to find out about this alternative high school so they can get on track and make their lives better. It's important and I'm important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom DeJardin and Joe McFerran.
And as, as people make their way to the table, I just want to review quickly the guidelines for public comment. Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Board members and superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment. If you want to follow up from the board office, please contact Ms. Hewson or Roseanne Powell, the board manager. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Hewson to distribute. Requests to make public comments should be made ahead of time by contacting the board office or checking with Ms. Hewson prior to the start of the board meeting to see if there are spots available. Once the board meeting has started, we can no longer accept new requests for public comment. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation, and please begin.
Thank you. School Board Directors and Superintendent Guerrero, my name is Tom DeJardin, and for the past fifteen years, I've had the honor of serving as Executive Director at Mount Scott Learning Center. Mount Scott is one of the contracted option schools serving PPS students. Prior to my time at Mount Scott, I worked in the Communications and Community Relations Office for St. Louis Kaiser Public Schools for ten years, and later was Executive Director of that district's Option High School. During my twenty-eight years working in public education and another twelve in the private sector, I have become well-aware of the need for quality education options for students that for a variety of reasons are not successful in larger traditional school environments. PPS has long recognized this need and become a national model for re-engaging struggling students through successful partnerships with contracted community-based organizations known as CBOs. The CBOs are a unique collective of innovative schools that effectively serve the district's most vulnerable students, historically undeserved populations that have the highest dropout rates. A large percentage of the students CBOs serve have been out of school for, at one point, for several months before enrolling in a CBO school. The CBO schools are reconnecting these students to the school district and their education and setting them up for future success. The schools provide flexible supportive programming focused on meeting students where they are so that these students can get back on track for graduation. These services include: small schools and class sizes that allow for more teacher attention; relationship-based environments that emphasize stability and predictability for trauma-impacted students; culturally-specific services and programming; mental health counseling and support, including drug and alcohol services; social and emotional supports that keep students engaged and enrolled; restorative and non-exclusionary discipline practices; and workforce training and post-secondary planning. We do all this and much more in close collaboration, alignment, and partnership with the school district. You've already heard tonight from two of the many PPS students served in the CBO schools, and I want to thank those of you, including Dr. Curtis and Dr. Quayar, that have taken time to visit our schools to listen to our students, which are also your students. Overwhelmingly, these students agree that the small personalized CBO schools are the option they need to succeed and that their success will not happen within a large comprehensive high school. In closing, thank you for recognizing that different students have different needs and that not every path to graduation looks the same. Thank you for working to ensure that every student counts. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe McFerran II. Good evening. Chair Moore, board members, student representative Pazler, and Superintendent Guerrero. I serve as President and CEO of Portland OIC and the Rosemary Anderson High School. I also serve on the Oregon Advanced Ed State Commission, responsible for accrediting schools and districts in our state. The House Bill 2016 African-American Black Student Success Advisory Board, the Metro Area Workforce Development Board, and the Mayor's Council of Economic Advisors. These service commitments are aimed at improving outcomes long-term for struggling students in our community. POC and PPS have partnered for more than thirty years to serve primarily low-income students living in underserved ZIP codes. Through our longstanding partnerships, we have changed lives, positively impacted our community, and provided hope for so many families overwhelmed with despair. The purpose of my brief testimony is to share the benefits The purpose of my brief testimony is to share the benefits to PPS for contracting with CBOs, call out resources leveraged by CBOs to educate students, and to offer up three opportunities to improve our work together in the years to come. First, CBOs' benefit to our community is, the obvious, is by increasing the number of graduates each year, increasing the number of young people ready for college and career, and reducing the number of opportunity youth in our region. Opportunity youth are defined as young people sixteen to twenty-four, not in school or not working. A better educated community will benefit us all. Secondly, by necessity, CBOs have leveraged additional resources to meet student needs from the public sector, Portland Children's Levy, Metro, and various departments throughout Multnomah County and the city of Portland. Corporate partners include, but are not limited to, Anderson Construction, Boeing, PCC Structurals, EY, Amazon, and Nike. Philanthropic partners supporting CBOs historically include the Oregon Community Foundation, Meyer Memorial Trust, the Collins Foundation, the Johnson Charitable Trust, and the Miller Foundation. Nonprofit allies include Northwest College of Construction, Friends of Trees, Boys and Girls Club, Friends of the Children, and the Rebuilding Center. CBOs have partnered with these organizations and many more to secure funding, volunteers, board members, technical assistance, and in-kind donations. There are three opportunities I believe that we can work together to improve our work. One would be doing a better job with students on IEPs together. Two, increasing mental health services to many of our students with mental health issues and concerns. And three, working together to keep our schools all safe from violence. On behalf of the CBOs and the Rosemary Anderson High School, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for your continued support of CBOs and the guidance and leadership from the Office of the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bella Penberthy and Stephanie Messenbrink.
My name is Bella Penberthy. I am a recent graduate of Cleveland High School, and I will be starting at Mills College in the fall. I'm currently an intern for Peace in Schools, the partner organization that leads the four credit mindfulness classes in ten Portland public high schools. I'm here today to urge the board and district as a whole to recognize the importance of this program and to continue funding it into next year. Before I begin, I'd like to invite the board and members of the audience to take maybe the deepest breath you've taken today. Thank you. While I was at Cleveland, I took the Peace in Schools class for three semesters. I took it that many times because it changed my life. It gave me tools to deal with anxiety and chronic illness. It helped me create better relationships with myself and others, and because of the sense of community in the class was so strong. These tools will stay with me the rest of my life, and I know many, many other students who feel the same. In the class, students have a rare chance for self-reflection in a place that we won't feel judged. Along with meditation and yoga, we learn strategies to lower stress, cultivate self-love and acceptance, recognize the conditioned mind processes, and find a place of blind. In short, everything you want students to be able to do in the confusing and often difficult time that is high school. As an intern, I've had the opportunity to meet with seven principals who have the program in their schools. Every principal I've talked to has said the same thing. They love the program, they want it to continue in their schools because they see how much students benefit, but they are worried about funding. A partnership that benefits students' well-being and mental health should be made freely available and not perpetually threatened. Imagine how many more students in need would have access to these tools if principals were able to promote the class instead of worrying if they could afford it. This class is saving lives, and the well-being of students should be prioritized over all else, especially with the district's goal of encouraging social-emotional learning. The Peace in Schools classes are also very trauma-sensitive, meaning the curriculum is aware and inclusive of all student experiences of trauma or adverse childhood experiences. This is vital in facilitating support and healing for students. In our current world, with all the challenges we face, it is more important than ever to be teaching teens empathy, gratitude, resilience, and awareness of their actions. Small acts of mindfulness over time can build better lives. We, as teens, are creating a future reality. Shouldn't we have access to the tools that will help us do it in a strong and loving way? I finally want to urge the board to get excited about the partnership with Peace in Schools and have pride in the fact that the first four credit mindfulness classes in the nation are taking place in our Portland public high schools. Five years ago, there was only one class in one high school. Now there are ten, and the program has served over a thousand students. With your help, thousands more could benefit. Please, for our students and future, prioritize, promote, and be proud to expand funding for this partnership in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Messenbrink, M-E-S-E-N-B-R-I-N-K. Superintendent Guerrero, members of the board, you've already heard from me in an email, but I wanted to put this out to the public. I am the parent of a fifth grader at Scott School. I'm also a member on the Scott PTA Board. I'm writing to you to present an issue with regards to building use for PTA events that seems to unfairly affect Title I school PTAs like ours. In order to hold fundraising events at school, we are required to complete a cub and pay the associated fees. According to the PPS Civic Use of Buildings Fee Schedule, PTA, PTO, and booster clubs are required to pay one hundred percent of the staffing and custodial costs as required. The fees typically cost our PTA $350 to use the school on a weekend day. This cost becomes a substantial hardship to PTAs at Title I schools like ours who do not have a foundation and operate on a limited annual budget. At a community event like our annual pancake breakfast, we only make about $700. Once you subtract the cost of the food and supplies and the cub fees, we actually don't make a profit. Title I PTAs typically don't have the option of renting other spaces, so using school buildings is our only option. PTAs can get around the fee if the school principal is willing to be at the event. However, not all principals are able or willing to do so. Additionally, the school custodian is someone who, with specialized knowledge of the school's utilities, and having a custodian in the building is the right thing to do for the safety of our community. PPS should not be forcing us to find ways to get around health and safety so that we can have a successful weekend event. It's also been brought to my attention that some schools don't have to pay. It just depends on who you ask, and if you ask the right person, or maybe we just don't know who to bring the muffins to. I don't know. The Scott PTA Board has discussed this issue and would like to propose a solution. Allow Title I schools to have two days per school year that allow building use with a custodian without the fees. This would allow PTAs with limited resources to hold fundraising community events at school and actually raise funds in the process. Thank you for considering this request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lastly, we have Ruth Flores and Aletha Brenner.
I am Ruth Flores. I am here today as the president of the PTA for Trillium Public Charter School, and it has recently been recommended that our charter be revoked, and our community is in a tornado of activity to save our school. In Trillium's charter agreement, it says that the district must give us reasonable opportunity to cure any deficiencies before taking action. So reasonable opportunity becomes the operative question. What's difficult to see from the outside is how much change and how much needed to change in a very short time in our school. Our current executive director got the position at the beginning of 2017 as a surprise. Our executive director left abruptly, who had been there for three years. So Patrice Mayes got the position, and also leaving with the last executive director was all his administrative staff and most of the board of directors. So Patrice Mayes was put in a very, very new position, that she had not served in that position before in any other school, and had a great deal of work that had to be done to get her feet back underneath her. She has done amazing things, and our school has come a very long way. What has happened in our school, what, a lot of our focus has been on restorative justice, which has worked very well in our schools for dealing with behavioral problems in the classrooms. It's very unique to our school and is working very well for us. It's a program that she worked very hard to set up, and it is, it is very healing in our classrooms. Racial equity is a huge thing she's been working on. We have a racial equity committee. There's work being done in the classrooms with the students and with parents, and we have monthly racial equity meetings for the general population. It is a huge priority in our school and is working very well. As the head of the PTA, we, I began this year in September, newly elected, and our PTA is now triple in size in one year. So we used to have one meeting maybe once a month, maybe every two months. Now we have two meetings a month. We are completely behind our leadership. We believe in her. We, the entire administrative team is doing great work, and we all have great faith in them, and the school spirit is just stronger every day. And so we really would love our new leadership to have the opportunity to complete their work, what they have started doing and what they are succeeding in doing, and we need to give them a chance to see it through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Aletha Brenner, and I'm a parent of two students who attend Trillium Community Charter, excuse me, Trillium Public Charter School. I'm here tonight to speak to you very briefly about Trillium and to ask you to really listen to parents and students as this process moves forward, to really understand what Trillium means to us. By all means, Trillium is not perfect, but it provides an extremely valuable resource for a lot of families who, for a variety of reasons, may struggle in a traditional school environment. We've heard tonight about Mount Scott and some other CBO schools and the very special role that they play within our system, providing a different option for certain students. And Trillium similarly serves a lot of students who, for a variety of reasons, may struggle in that traditional environment. Families are very concerned about the loss of this resource and the impact on their students. Many of the kids who are at Trillium are vulnerable kids who have a wide variety of special needs, and I'm not talking simply about learning style needs, although there's a significant way in which Trillium provides a different environment for those kids, but also, especially and personally speaking about LGBTQ children. I could say personally that the school has done an incredible, incredible job creating a nurturing, safe environment for those kids, for kids who are transgender especially, and the loss of Trillium would be devastating to those children. You know, a lot of the students come to Trillium having come out of traumatic experiences, and Trillium has provided them with a place where they can heal, where they can learn, where they can be supported. And, you know, it hasn't always perfectly achieved its aims in the past, but as mentioned by our PTA president, there's been incredible progress and change in the last year and a half that has really been astounding to see as a parent and has made us all so grateful to have Trillium as an option for our kids. And so from a holistic standpoint, Trillium is very successful for a lot of the students who are there, who have not succeeded at other schools, and it would be an incredible blow to the community to lose that resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So...
I just had a request for a moment. It's been a little bit of a tradition for us to introduce new leadership members to Team PPS, and today is the second day of Mr. Don Wolf, our new Chief Technology Officer. We like to provide our new members of our leadership team a moment to tell you a little bit from where they came and what they're looking forward to in this new leadership post.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Don Wolf. I'm most recently coming from the Hillsborough School District, where I served for the last five and a half years. Very excited to be a part of PPS, the change that's happening here, the path forward that we're looking forward to, and making technology a relevant and very clear part of that path is what excites me and what brought me down here to the school district. So thank you for the warm welcome. Glad to be here and looking forward to the work and working with all of you.
Welcome aboard.
So forty-eight hours in, we're halfway fixed, right?
Haven't crashed yet.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to suspend the board meeting, and we're going to move upstairs to Mazama and reconvene as a work session. Everybody's invited to join us with the understanding that this is going to be, a lot of it's going to be small group work, so just telling you, it might be a little frustrating to sit in the peanut gallery. So we will, we anticipate it's going to be somewhere between ninety minutes and two hours total as a work session, and then following that, we're going to reconvene back down here to complete the rest of the board meeting. Okay, and I'm going to ask my board colleagues and staff to move expeditiously to Mazama. Thanks. Okay, we are now reconvened as a regular board meeting after the work session, and the next two items on the agenda are the board work plan and the superintendent's goals. And we will be voting on them separately, but I wanted to give a little preamble by way of introduction to the two documents. And we, we as a board and the executive leadership of the district, had a retreat over the weekend where we worked with leaders from the Council of Great City Schools to examine how we are doing our work currently and discuss how we might improve our processes, and in particular, our governance practices and the understanding, developing a common understanding of the role of the board in governing Portland Public Schools, a district of fifty thousand students. We heard, we heard quite a lot. I think it was a very productive session, and we heard a lot about the research, national research findings related to the governance practices that are associated with the greatest improvement in student outcomes. And, and I also want to do a little footnote here. When we talk about student outcomes, we're talking about academic achievement, academic progress, but we're also talking about student outcomes in terms of the whole child. So it includes not only academics, but also social-emotional learning, the ability of students to develop their, to identify and develop their interests and their passions and their skills, and develop as fully functional, fully... and their skills and develop as fully functional, fully, fully engaged community members. So what we learned was that the, the greatest progress is made in districts where the school boards focus on student outcomes very explicitly. And, and we have a consensus in principle, I think from all of the board members, that we are at a point right now in the, in the evolution of Portland Public Schools that we, it would, it would be appropriate for the school board to refocus its attention much more explicitly on student outcomes. And I think this is, this is the moment to do this because we have had now a new superintendent who is no longer new. He's new-ish and getting older by the day. And we have a superintendent who came to us in October 2017 and he has assembled a team, which is now almost a complete team of, of district leaders who have track records of turning districts around. And we collectively, I think, have been focused on rebuilding a foundation for a school district. Portland Public Schools, as I think most people who've been paying attention know, has, has been lacking district-wide systems and structures and protocols and practices that we know are associated with high-functioning school districts that serve students well. As the evaluation from last Oc-, the superintendent evaluation from last October pointed out, we have been in, we have been collectively engaged in building a foundation. And one, the, the work plan that is on the agenda tonight, which is available for your edification on the website, lays out in pretty explicit detail the, the kind of work, the scope of work, the depth and breadth of work that is, that has been going on for the last sixteen months and will continue to go on. It is, the, the website has, part of the materials for this board meeting, there's a very high-level kind of headings of the work plan. Anybody who's interested in the gory details can click down and see a pretty impressive document that lays out an enormous amount of work that is underway in this district. And the work that is being done is very explicitly intended to create the foundation, to build the structures and the systems that will allow PPS to be a truly functional school district and ultimately high-performing. And the, the board has been very actively engaged in encouraging this kind of work and we've been focused on, sort of by, by the nature of the people who are on this board and our experience, our long-term experience with, in dealing with PPS for many years, but also based on the, the obvious needs to rebuild PPS as a school district. And most of our attention has been focused on what I would call sort of process measures, identifying the strands of work that, that need to, needed to happen to, to create these foundational structures. A lot of that work is, a lot of that work is completed in many cases. Other work is well underway. The, the work plan and the goals, the second document that we're going to be voting on tonight, lay out some of the highest priority efforts that are underway. And we're going to be paying very close attention for the balance of this school year on progress toward completing all of the tasks that have been identified. For, for the rest of the school year, we're going to be getting periodic updates on progress toward fulfilling the, the goals. And at the end of the year, we're going to, we're going to have an assessment of kind of where we are in terms of the work that has been committed to. And the goals that have been identified for this year are very much interim goals. These are the foundational work. But we're now at a point where we have developed or will be developing these, these foundational systems. And over the weekend, we as a board agreed that we now need to pivot our attention to focus much more explicitly on student outcomes writ large. So what you'll be seeing over the next, particularly six months, I think, is, is a shift, a gradual shift in the, the kinds of issues that will be coming forward during board meetings and work sessions. We'll be, we'll be talking about things somewhat differently. We're going to be working very, very closely with the, these leaders from the Council of Great City Schools to, to help us identify the long-term, a, a set of outcome measures that we can focus on, really establish some specific goals for the superintendent for next year. We're going to be, we're going to be sort of recalibrating what we're focusing our attention on and very explicitly tending to questions about what outcomes do we want for our students and how are we going to know if we achieve them? We'll be working with the Council of Great City Schools. At the same time, we're in the middle of a visioning process and we're getting lots and lots of information from, from parents and students and community members and teachers and school leaders about what people want PPS to be and do for our students. And that is going to be critically important information that will allow us to refocus our attention, identify what our goals are as a system. We will have, by the end of this school year, we will have identified a vision for this district, which we've never, well, I won't say never. In my experience of PPS, we've never had that. And this is going to be how we're going to kind of pivot and refocus on what really matters, making sure that we are serving all of our students as well as we possibly can to ensure that every student gets the kinds of educational experiences and supports and opportunities that all of our students deserve. So that's by way of introduction. I'd invite anybody else who might want to...
Are you going to move the items or how do you, how are we going to do this?
Well, okay, so we can...
This is a procedural question.
Well, I was just going to say if anybody else wants to, wants to comment on what happened over the weekend, this might be a good time. And then, and then we'll move each of the two resolutions.
I just want to bring, I think that was very well, that was a good wrap-up. It was well said and I just want to bring it full circle back to the visioning process and back to what you referred to in this work plan and these superintendent goals as being process goals, which is not ideal in terms of measurement tools. But the visioning process is, the idea is that it will result in a strategic plan, which will result in very clear strategic priorities, which will be our metrics for the district as a whole and for the superintendent's performance in his leadership role. And so in the absence of that, that's why we are where we are with these process goals. And I think there was, there was no other alternative at this moment in time and I want to commend the senior staff for working so closely with the board in creating a unified work plan in terms of digesting the priorities that the board was clearly expressing were important to us collectively, while we also respected what they were bringing forward from their individual work strands as the highest priority items. And then together we did do some, some triage and that's where we ended up with this work plan. And again, just from my perspective, the goals that we have before us as far as the superintendent goals are really just another expression of the work plan roadmap and not so much performance metrics, but we are all united that this is ultimately what we want to see, want and need to see for our kids in the next year and that's what we're asking for you and your, of you and your leadership.
So want to comment that, that work plan that you can click down and see is actually a pretty amazing document and I've been, as a teacher and educator in many districts, I haven't seen anything that is like that in detail and really, as you call it, a roadmap of how things are going to change and then how we can really start focusing on student outcomes. So it was very exciting as, I think, as we shared our work plan and went through the retreat to understand that in the time that you've been here, so much foundational, so many of the foundations have been built and shortly, I think, really, we'll be able to see so much of the progress. So the goals aren't what we want them to be now as everybody has reiterated, but they are the process goals to provide the foundation so that we can really then hone in on student achievement in the next cycle.
You looking for a motion for these items together or individually?
Individual. So the board will now consider resolution number 5819, a resolution to accept the board's 2018-19 work plan. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Director Sparza Brown moves. Director Anthony seconds the adoption of resolution number 5819. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? Okay, is there any board discussion?
So I'm going to just reserve my comments for when we get to the superintendent's goals because they're linked comments.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay. The board will now vote on resolution number 5819. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Representative Paisler?
Yes.
Resolution number 5819 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Paisler voting yes. Okay, next, superintendent goals. The board will now consider resolution number 5820, superintendent goals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. Director Anthony moves and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5820. Is there any public comment? Okay, is there any board discussion?
So I supported the work plan. I'm going to support the superintendent goals and I fully support the pivot, but if we're going to pivot, we got to pivot. And I think it's going to be really important on the work plan that we, even though we're adopting it tonight, that we marry it with where we are right now so we have some metrics of where our students currently are because if, if we don't rip off the Band-Aid and just share where we are as a starting point, we're never going to make the pivot to be talking about student outcomes. From my standpoint, I don't think we should be waiting for, you know, the superintendent's next year's goals. I think we should infuse it into the budget process. I mean, when I look at the data that we had upstairs, just, I mean, a couple of data points that I looked at, they just jumped out, like the mathematics, three-year average, middle school, African-American students, eleven percent at benchmark, white, fifty-nine point six percent. And then I looked at the, this document that we had about the elementary schools and its mathematics change from last year. Just on the first page of the twenty-three schools, fifteen of the schools decreased, not no change, decreased, and eight increased or had no change. So I, I think it's, this data is going to, is, when it's laid out against the work plan or the superintendent's goals, even if it's a benchmark of where we are, it is, I think, going to be hard for the community, except in some cases that that's where we are. But if you are a parent of a child who is not achieving, you know that already and so I don't think we should shy away from where we are. So I would really hope in the budget process and next year that we stop talking about process or foundations, that yes, it has to happen, but we need to make the pivot and do foundational work and identify where we're going to, you know, if we're going to apply, there's going to be strategies applied, like what, what are we trying to achieve with those strategies of the twenty million dollars? What are we going to, what are we trying to move on these, these numbers? And they are what they are and the, I mean, the board and the superintendent and all the new staff, like, we, we got them, so, you know, we now own them and I really hope that we make a strong pivot, not wait till the vision's done, the strategic plan, that we sort of get after it because there's some basic stuffs we can do. We can't wait for a whole nother budget cycle to identify some things that we want to move.
So I don't think anybody has, has discussed waiting for another budget cycle, so I'm not quite sure. I mean, we all are aware and really concerned about the disparities, particularly me. I mean, I'm looking at the groups that, kids of color and kids like me that haven't had equitable education. Are you kidding? But we haven't even had an IT person to give us the data until recently, so I think that we are on the right track and the foundations that we are putting into place and the discussions that we're having and the kinds of exercises that we just did about the budget is what is really helping us to now be able to, to look at the budget differently and to prioritize. So, I mean, I think that, I agree, our, we, we have to change those outcomes, but I think that we are and I don't hear anybody saying that that isn't our focus.
And I think it's important to... I guess I just, to respond, I don't, because I'm going to want to see on the document. So the work plan, we talked at one point about having another column that just wasn't even like, we're trying to move it, but just here's where we are so that we can start measuring that, that growth. And I just think we need to sort of lay down the marker sooner rather than later because I think if we wait till the strategic plan's finished, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be then off into the next budget cycle.
I think it is important to be explicit about the fact that that are, that is the underpinning of the work plan itself and all the reorganization that we've seen on the academic side of the house in the three areas is all coming from the assessment of that data and the need to change our structures in service to moving kids forward. I mean, you look at the whole way that we have reorganized, one of the main elements on the work plan in terms of reorganizing principal supervisory structures and the, the amount of instructional leadership and coaching that is going into our lowest-performing schools now. I mean, that, that's the work that we're talking about that's called out on the work plan and that is all work that is grounded in the analysis of the data. So I'm glad you pointed that out, Julie, that it's not, we're going to wait and see or it's not an either-or situation. This is the work. This is the work that is underway, and this is the work that we, we need to continue, and we need to be explicit about how we're, we're measuring it.
Yeah, and again, I just want the, the community to be clear, that this is not where we're stopping and we're waiting to change the trajectory for kids. That's absolutely not the case.
I, just a comment, I'm not saying we're stopping, I'm just saying we should identify where we're trying to go specifically, and just getting a, a starting line, baseline, here's where we are and where we're gonna try and move, and knowing that it's multi-year investments are, are going to be what it takes behind those strategies. But I also think we have to take the great work that's started and connect it to actually student data and where, where we're trying to go.
And I think we just came out of a two-hour session where we talked about reinvigorating a commitment to racial equity and social justice, and, and then participated in a very brief exercise, a taste of the way the budget discussion is going to proceed, and indication of how the staff are building the budget through internal processes of identifying clear goals and, and then identifying instructional strategies, or strategies to respond to the identified need, and talking in terms of investments and, and return, academic return on investment. That's a level of, you know, evaluative rigor that I certainly have never heard anybody talk about during a budget process in PPS. So I think quite the contrary, I don't think anybody is suggesting that we're, we're gonna slow down, never mind stop, and we're going to be using this budget process this year to, to identify the places where investments will be most productive to improve student outcomes, and, and set up metrics to evaluate them over time. And this is a budget process, I've been, I've been pretty deep in budget weeds in this district for the last, like, eight years. I certainly have never heard anything like this before in budget discussions. So I'm looking forward to this budget-building process as, as an opportunity to be transparent about what the needs are and how we're gonna meet them, even, even in the face of a cut budget.
I think important component of that, too, is the, to flex our ability to course-correct, too, which we talked about upstairs. And so, you know, you have to, you have to balance giving things time to have an impact, but also to have metrics that show you when your investment is not getting the results that you're looking for, and when it should be deployed in a different way, and to have the courage to make those decisions.
And have the ability to know when those decisions are necessary.
Right.
And we've never had that before.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, so I just want to say, yes, I, I'm a little puzzled by Director Bemater's comments, but I'd like to focus on the actual resolution. And I'm gonna be voting no, because I think we heard over the weekend that these are the wrong set of goals. We're already most the way through the year anyway. We're pretty close to having a vision. So it's, it's, and that's what I'm taking away from this weekend and where we need to go, you know, some, if you want to wait and pivot later, pivot is the, you know, if that's the word we're using, wait later, I, it's, it's, I'm no problem with that, but I'm, that's where I'm going now. So I'd, I'd rather that we had an informal tracking of the work plan in the interim, and, you know, when we get back on cycle for an annual evaluation, that we come up with achievement, or a student outcome-centered goals there. So it's not any big difference, but that's just where I am.
I respect that, and I'm, from my point of view, I'm really viewing these two documents as the same thing, and that this is not a tool really for the superintendent's performance other than that he is ultimately responsible for the success and execution of this broader plan.
Yeah, exactly.
And we know this is not where we wanted to be. We've all, you know, I think expressed that, but this is where we're at now, and at least it gives us something to measure in terms of setting that foundation that will then allow us to really move on to outcomes.
So I think, in fairness to the superintendent, we need to be clear that, like, this is the tool. I mean, I don't think we can say we're gonna vote for it, but it's not really the tool. I don't think that's fair to the superintendent, so if we're gonna approve it, then, I mean, the expectation is...
That's why, that's...
Right, so I think, and, you know, I, I was almost gonna be in the, in the same position of being a no, because I would rather have, well, I think it's, it's very late in the process, but rather have non-process, just non-process goals. But I think if we approve it, the expectation of the superintendent is that that's what he's gonna be evaluated against, not some other metric.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Did you want to say something?
Probably the main responsibility that a board of education has is to offer clarity around the expectations it has for its one employee. So we're clear as, as an administration that we have a lot of ambitious work to accomplish that is gonna posture us to alter the outcomes for students in PPS, particularly those that have not been historically served well. There exists a plethora of baseline data already. We are reaculturating the system at the school level, at the department level, the central office level, and as we learned this weekend, at the board level, to be data-literate. And so our coaching and guidance has been to prepare, encourage, and many of our schools are already far down the line in reflecting on student outcome data and measures as a matter of practice. And so you saw a small sampling today, we regularly put it on the table all the time. In thinking about the work that we need to do, it's hard to measure sort of the add-value of our efforts, because even if you identified metrics, tonight, for what you hope to see in the way of a difference for June, would be sort of an interesting task. So, and we know what the trends have been over the last, there's a lot of three-year data samples, we could go further than that. What we'd like to be able to do is kind of present a very 360-degree sort of approach to how we will engage in cycles of continuous improvement that are evidence-based. And so we, we are attempting to build up to that point. It's also helpful to identify measures and evidence of success towards an actual vision of what we want to see for outcomes for students. So we haven't defined that yet, and we've invited the community to help us define what that co-constructive, constructed collective vision will be, so that it's helpful for us to actually articulate a set of strategies wrapped around a theory of action towards that vision. And that will take multiple plans over multiple years, making incremental progress towards that vision. You also just came out of a work session, we all did, where you heard we are significantly facing a budget gap to begin to still maintain traction in the right direction. And so we're having to make very difficult, sometimes painful, decisions about where are we gonna make reductions, maintain our core functions as a system that we've just started to build, maintain improvement in the areas we've just started to fortify, and what can we do in areas that have been severely lacking, and what are areas we're obligated to invest in. And so it's already a tall order to bring forth a balanced budget proposal, but we're getting a pretty solid understanding of what are the areas we're gonna be wanting to invest in as we move forward that we believe will have the highest return on investment. In many of the areas that none of us are satisfied in seeing waves of red through the data, the same student subgroups not historically achieving, the data is simply a symptom of the conditions and the capacity in schools. We are gonna need to spend some time really understanding that, or we will approach this backwards. So until we have a clear understanding of what should exist in every school community and how we ensure that that is there, starting with our neediest schools first, can we begin to hold accountable those at the school level for results that we share responsibility and ownership in? And so I just propose that, you know, we continue in our own professional learning about how data is gonna be a key benchmark and marker for the health and performance of the school system, but I'm looking forward to a lot of conversations around what it looks like to have a concrete, evidence-based theory of action in play here in PPS, because that is a trajectory that will get us accelerated student outcomes for the ones that we say that we are concerned about. And so how do we maintain both a racial equity and social justice lens while simultaneously promoting excellence in the school system? And so we have an opportunity to build on lots of examples living today in our schools in either of those areas, we just need more of it. And so I think the, the work lists that, list of tasks that have been identified, we're gonna stay focused on those this year. We will present to you our progress against them at the close of the school year. We actively, every day, are tracking our energy and how we're coming along. We're gonna be ambitious in saying we're gonna do our best to complete them all. And I am looking forward at midsummer to having a vision underway to being published to kick off a school year with, with our community, with a strategic plan starting to get drafted, with a balanced scorecard version 1.0 to go, and that our, our sessions begin to reflect a syllabus where we are progress-monitoring and understanding the strategies and the work that's going towards a range of student outcome measures that give us confidence and that we're moving in the right direction. So I'll just say that.
Pretty coherent.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on resolution 5820. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Any abstentions? Student representative Paisler?
Yes.
Resolution 5820 is approved by a vote of six to one, with student representative Paisler voting yes. Okay, next item is business agenda. The board will now vote on the remaining items in its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 5819 and 5820. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda? Okay, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Konstant moves. Director Anthony seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
Yes, I had a couple, a couple things. One, and I've given Mr. Garcia heads up, that there is a, an acceptance of the grants from Meyer Memorial Trust for family engagement, and I've had several, it was a great, great win for the team to win that grant. I've had several people in the community have all these ideas for how we might spend that money to increase community engagement, but I think it's important to note that there is a, a specific purpose for it, and I was wondering if...
Yeah, Jonathan Garcia, who leads our strategic partnerships and fund development, this is a big win for work that we want to do in this area. But of course, when you apply for a competitive grant, it requires an application that already stipulates what you would be committed to doing. So can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, definitely. So as you all might know, this is the first grant that Meyer Memorial has given directly to PPS since 2007. So I think, again, it just shows the commitment from our philanthropic community to, to invest in areas of opportunity for the district. So this, this Meyer Memorial Grant specifically is to support our efforts to sustain and maintain, and sustain and cultivate effective partnerships with our families in our community. What we know is, over the last year, that since we've been, since I've been on board, that, you know, we, we have this perpetual cycle where the district is claiming that we, we do community partnerships or community engagement right, but the community has expressed on many occasions that we're not. And so this is our, really our attempt to, to bring the, the conversation together to, to plan some, you know, how, how we as a, as a, as a district can do this right. And so we're gonna be using some frameworks that are proven concepts nationally. So we're looking at Professor Karen Map's work, her dual, her family and community engagement capacity building framework. But we're also wanting to, to think about using a community organizing as a tool for school and district transformation. And so we want to be really creative about how we use Karen Map's framework, which, again, has been proven across districts, urban, suburban, rural, but then really bring community organizing tools and, and a lens to, to build something creative that is only unique to Portland. And so, so really excited about that, specifically in terms of the, the outcomes that we've outlined in the, in the grant. So there are essentially three grant outcomes. The first one will be to redesign our organizational, organizational structure to support family and community engagement, community and family empowerment. And so that's the first direct outcome of this proposal. Secondly, we're gonna, we're, we're looking to expand our capacity as a central office, and then ultimately our school-based staff to, to do effective family engagement to support student achievement. And so we're gonna outline very clearly what those, those areas are, and, and begin a work plan, you know, to, to implement that work. And then the last outcome that, that we've identified is to strengthen voice of families, especially families of color, and those that have been historically left out of the conversation here in Portland, to support, again, ultimately, student achievement. So we're trying to make the direct correlation that, you know, as part of a school transformation, that one of those key ingredients is family and community, voice and community empowerment. And so the way that we're doing this is we're gonna be enlisting the support of our community leaders, community partners, such as Unite Oregon, such as Coalition Communities of Color, folks that are out in the community, really working day in and day out on the ground with communities and really have a pulse of what, you know, families, parents, students are, are sharing. And so, again, want to be, be able to create a mechanism in which we bring that up to the, to the, to the central office, up to the leadership, to the board. And so a lot of the, the funding that is being provided by Meyer is to develop that work plan, that, the strategic plan, if you will, and then in, in year two, really begin to implement some, some strategies and some, some work around that, both at the central office level and at school, school base, at the school-based level as well.
This is great to hear. Number of years ago, I worked with the district to pioneer a, a family literacy nights where we gave specific ideas on how families, parents and guardians can engage with their students to reinforce what was happening in the classroom in culturally responsive ways. And during that time period, came upon a, in Illinois, they'd actually done 50 schools that got a series of workshops for parents, and 50 that were demographically matched that didn't, and at the end of one year, I believe, it's been a long time, but there was a significant...
And at the end of one year, I believe, it's been a long time, but there was a significant, statistically significant jump in test scores in those schools. It was, you know, I've, you know, maybe two percentage points in terms of meeting benchmark, that kind of thing. And that was a pretty minimal investment.
Yeah.
But that was, you know, rarely in education do we see that kind of actually control group kind of, rarely, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Well, that one did it, I thought, pretty well.
Well, I would, I would say that, you know, we, we do know that, and we, we talked about this quite a bit, you know, there, there, one thing to do engagement and one to do empowerment. I think what you're hinting at is how do we ensure that the system is working collaboratively with our community to empower and, and bring forth knowledge and ideas about what school transformation actually looks like, right? And so bringing that to the forefront versus, you know, come to a board meeting or come to, you know, that's, that's one level of engagement and that's probably very basic. But how do we take it to the next level? And I think that's what this work is really looking to do, is to take community engagement to the next level and really ensure that, you know, community voice is at the center of a lot of our major decisions or a lot of our decisions. And, and again, this can be duplicated with student voice. And so we're starting to really think about, again, what are those values? What are those, what's that framing for student voice in all of our decision making, you know, or, or, yeah, as we make decisions? And what we know is that there are a lot of bright spots in, in our, in our community, in our district now. You know, last week you all had a chance to hear from Gear Up, and they're doing some amazing community organizing work through that, through that effort. And so, again, we've already begun conversations with them, with our resorted justice team. And so really starting to think about, you know, what are the bright spots and how do we then strengthen that and, and expand that across the district? So again, this, this is what the funds will, will support.
Well, they also, so there's a group of parents that we really traditionally have kind of left out too. So how do we engage those that are diverse parents with kids in special education, almost like a separate subgroup there that we really need to consider also that have some, maybe different needs in some ways?
Yeah, no, definitely. And so I think that's part of this, this effort, is to really think about who, you know, who are the communities or what are the communities that have been historically, you know, left out? And, you know, again, we're not going to wait for this grant to, to let us know that. We already know that there are certain communities. So as part, as, for example, as part of the visioning process for this round, one thing that we heard from a lot of our Spanish-speaking sped parents, special education parents, is that they wanted to have a, a safe space to provide insight and input into the vision. And so we've, we've allowed for that in February for our community session. So we'll have a special education parent night, all done in Spanish with, you know, English translation, to give them that opportunity. And so, again, we're trying to be responsive even now without waiting for the plan that comes out of this grant.
Can you make sure to send the date? If I'm in town, I'd really like to particularly attend that.
Definitely. We'll make sure that the board has all those dates as well.
Great.
Thanks to you and the fund development team for their work on this application. We know family engagement is a big topic. This is one strategic attempt to work with Dr. Karen Mapp, once again, on her dual capacity framework to help us think about our broader work in, in this area. So thank you to the team for, once again, bringing it in.
Nice to feel that, nice to feel that validation from our community to that they're starting to recognize that we are indeed a good investment.
Any further discussion on the business agenda?
Two other small items. Just one, I want to note that we're going to be extending an offer, approving tonight, extending an offer to Mary Catherine Moore to be the internal performance auditor at the district. I want to thank the audit committee members, Director Rosen and Director Anthony for their work and the partnership with Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Ms. Moore, this is going to be confusing, another Moore.
No relation.
More, more.
I just realized that. Anyway, Mary Catherine. She's, she comes to us from a long tenure at Providence. She's been an internal auditor there with their risk and integrity services and also been a health plan compliance auditor and also in their appeals and grievance analyst. So comes with a really strong background. We're looking forward to welcome him into the team, and we've got plenty of work to do. So we'll vote on that tonight. And as everybody knows, we still have another position that's outstanding. And then the only other thing on the business agenda I just wanted to remark on is we're voting on a whole host of off-campus activities tonight. And as we think about next year, just our work around equity, and, and I know Director Konstant has talked about this in committee meetings before, but we have everything from, we have eight things we're going to be approving, and they range in price from $30 to $4,500 per student. But most of them are $1,500 to $2,500 per student for these field trips. And they, with one exception, and that's the $30 a student one, with one exception, they're also our highest SES schools. So we think about the type of experiences our students are getting is, I think this is going to be an area that is rich with opportunity for us to, to do better. Not do better, but to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity to do things out of our schools that provide sort of rich learning experiences.
Well, this falls under the umbrella of our lapsed conversation around student activities, fees, and equity in that conversation. So we'll make sure that it includes field trips as well when we pick that back up.
I just want to update my earlier comment, Director Moore, Director Brimett, or just correct if with the board's affirmative action, you'll now have two employees. When you bring on a, an additional performance auditor, that'll make three. I, I just wanted to make a com-
And I love that you raised your hand.
Thank you. I've been a public educator all my life. I just wanted to make a comment on what I, we haven't talked about here this evening that is also on the business agenda, that probably is the one that families are wondering most about this evening, resolution 5821 on the school calendar. I just want to mention it because I want to acknowledge and appreciate all the input from the community. I know that every morning when I opened my inbox, there was no shortage of requests and preferences and a lot of demands to, to try to balance. And I know our board members probably received their share as well. So we've done our best to, to balance all of those requests while still meeting our priorities. The one thing that I lament is that there are not more instructional days for us to include in this calendar. So I hope we keep that at the forefront, and I would be remiss if I didn't appreciate and acknowledge Daniel Cogan for his work and being our staff lead on pulling this together. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions?
I forgot to say yes.
Student Representative Paisler?
Yes.
Okay. Business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting yes. Okay. Board committee and conference reports and the student representative report. Representative Paisler, do you have any comments? You don't have to.
Yeah, nothing.
Okay. Any committee reports?
So just from the audit committee, so now that we've got a auditor on the way to be hired, I just want to note that Director Konstant, that audit that was left over from two years ago is on the next audit committee agenda. So that was, we're, we're going to wrap that up. And we have a full agenda in the audit committee around setting up the audit action plan for the, the state, the state audit. So that'll continue to be a focus. And also the second performance auditor. And the policy and governance committee, we have another meeting in a couple weeks. This afternoon, I forwarded a document to board members around the field trip and travel policy changes that are currently under consideration. The board's been, the policies committee's been working on this for two to three months. We actually have two items that have been first read. And based, after last committee's meeting, I had a conversation with the superintendent, some of the school communities, and attempted to come up with some proposed revisions for consideration. I said, I want to thank the superintendent for some of the, the concepts behind what, well, I, I think what we're, we're, there's several things we're trying to achieve. One, we have the underlying student safety issues relating to the Whitehurst report. But some other things we want to do in terms of field trips and travel to make sure that what their students are staying in their home schools, when other students are traveling, that they continue to have continuation of curriculum, but that we also look at this concept of a eighth grade capstone experience so that not just some of our students have that. So I've circulated it to everybody and will have a discussion. Certainly, if people have comments, please send them, but we'll have a comment, a discussion at the next policy and governance committee meeting, along with a host of other issues.
I don't have a conference or meeting report, just an observation that this afternoon, the student district council seemed to have their largest meeting I've ever seen being held. I don't know, I don't want to put them on the spot, but...
Yeah, I mean, I was going to, yeah, mention, I just didn't, I'm losing energy. No, I was surprised to really come in. I was running around up in the offices upstairs, and I came back with a handful of stuff, and the room was, like, packed. I didn't, there was, like, eight more students than I had assumed there was going to be. So I was really excited to see that. And so I think quite a few of them were from Benson, so I think the next meeting we're going to have, we're planning to have at Benson to make travel a little bit easier for them. But I'm really excited that there's more voices circulating, more people are starting to hear about the district student council, because when I came in, there wasn't really much meat to it. So I'm really excited about that. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to working with more of them. More students, the better. So thanks for mentioning.
What did they show up to talk about today?
Today, we are focusing on the policy, actually. So we're working towards, I, because they were, this is their first meeting, we had to kind of backtrack on where we are. So that was kind of our main conversation, talking about, we were really talking about the future of PPS, and we've been doing a lot of revisioning as of late. So we, it centered around the policy and also centered around, like, how do we want student voice to look in the next, you know, 10 years, 20 years? And what, what are those structural plans of how we're going to, how we're going to make that important and how we're going to, like, keep doing that, keep doing that throughout the school year consecutively? So, yeah.
That's great.
Good stuff.
We did have a meeting of the charter committee this week where we reviewed a lot of student data around, for five of our charter schools. And we have two that are up for renewal, Emerson and Trillium. And it's a very prescribed process from the state, how we go through that. And so we will be having two hearings, just landing on those dates, recommending renewal for Emerson. And we did have a staff recommendation, which was then forwarded on by the board subcommittee to not to renew Trillium Charter School, based on the data in their last two years since they were put on a plan of improvement. And again, these are prescribed steps from the state. And it was very, it was a really rich conversation and a very difficult conversation, because it's clear that they have invested a lot in improving things at Trillium and had, had some success, but still very little movement in terms of their student outcomes and also their enrollment. So Roseanne, help me, we just landed today on the dates and times for those hearings. That'll be posted, but we're looking at Emerson, at Emerson on the 20th.
Yeah, Trillium is the 20th.
Oh, Trillium on the February 20th, and Emerson?
We think the 25th.
Okay, still not quite certain about that, but Trillium on the 20th at, I believe, 4:00 PM?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll all be posted. So that's where we are.
So did the, you said the committee, you forwarded on the staff recommendation, does that mean the committee agreed with it or recommending it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. And, but we'll have this full hearing, and they, they went on the record as saying that they didn't agree, and they want more time to try to show that they're turning things around. So we know a lot of members of their community are going to come forward for this hearing, and then there'll be a full, a board, a vote of the full board.
Any other reports?
Just real quickly, the core team that's working on the vision process, as the superintendent indicated earlier, we have four open houses planned for the next stage in the visioning process to invite the public to that are coming up at Wilson, Franklin, Jefferson, and Roosevelt's. And I don't have quite the right order, but that, that'll be through the end of this month and into March 1st and 2nd. So looking forward to that, along with a number of targeted meetings, like the one that Jonathan Garcia mentioned, around Latinx parents of students with, receiving special education services. So we're working on both those big open houses and targeted so that we get, again, our, our goal is to hear from every, well, not everyone, but a fair representation of our community and our students.
Then one last thing. Hang on, did you want to?
Yeah, just real quick. So all, all of the, all of the dates have been sent to all the PP, all PPS community through email today. It's also available online. So as a reference point, because, again, there are the community sessions, and, and just to, to, to be clear, last month, when we did the first round of committee sessions, we definitely did, did those, I would say, in, in group settings, in, you know, at tables and, and more dialogue and conversation, a lot of post-its. We had over 12,000 post-its generated in these community sessions. And, and so what's going to, the, the sessions in February and into March are going to look slightly different, as these are more of facilitated walks or journeys, à la museum, if you're going to a museum. And so it's a little bit more condensed. And so during these four community sessions that we're having across the city, we are inviting subgroups that we did, that we had in January to participate in a, again, facilitated journey, although those sessions will be open for the general public. And then we are continuing to do our work with students. And so if you look at the, the list, you'll say, you'll see that there are less community meetings in comparison to January. It is still the same number of, of, of groups that we worked with in January, in just a much more condensed time because of the, the nature of these sessions. And so, so, yeah, just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Thank you. Just last bit, today I was down in Salem, met with five legislators. Today was the lobby day, a lobby day for Oregon School Boards Association. So we had a lot of parent activists in Salem, a lot of school board members, really focusing on two things, talking about the recommendations that came out of the Joint Committee on Student Success, which are shaping the conversations around where investments need to go in, in K-12. And then the other piece is just making sure that the conversations about that need in K-12 is connected with the ongoing revenue conversations in terms of scope. And those were good conversations. And it's always, I mean, Nick, you know it, and I don't know if you are working with students at all on days when students are going down, or if a bunch are going on President's Day as part of that effort, but it, you always see the light go off when it's citizen activists that are talking to our representatives about our experiences in our schools with our kids. So it's, it's always worth the effort.
Well, I totally agree. And I mean, I can say, I personally have been on a couple lobby days where, in, with past organizations, but I went with organizations down to Salem, and a group of students and I, students, or us students would go into, you know, legislators' offices- and we would, you know, talk about certain bills that we want to promote for education and for funding for education. And, um, it's really, I mean, not only is it a great experience, but you're completely right. It's like, you gotta get community members in there, you gotta get students in there because we're the ones who it's going to affect in the long run. So, yeah, headline. And I am aware that, I am aware that a couple of organizations are planning to go down to Salem as well, so we're good.
Can I ask a question? Are you going to call them?
I, it's me.
Just in terms of calendaring, do we, um, have dates for any of the meetings with the high schools on the school resource officer issue? Is that, are those been set up?
We do. Um, board members, you may have noticed in our board update, a listing of those dates. Jonathan, do you want to elaborate?
We just got back today.
Yeah, so, uh, our chief of staff, Stephanie Sodin, sent an update to the board this morning that included, uh, the dates for the 11 communities, or student voice sessions that we'll be having. Um, most of those fall in the last week of, uh, February, um, so you can take a look. Um, there are only two, essentially four meetings that are overlapping, but every other one, I mean, you can essentially come to, to most of those. We will be providing clear, um, a clear outline of, of roles and expectations of the board, of adults in the room, um, because we, again, want to be intentional about, uh, up, you know, lifting student voice, uh, throughout this entire conversation. And so, uh, which means that, uh, you know, we have to take, take a step back as adults and, and, and really, uh, you know, hear from and really listen to, to students on a number of fronts. So again, more, more to come, um, by end of week with a detailed agenda and expectations for the adults in the room.
Do you want us to, are we supposed to be like, be dividing up or, I mean, is there preferred, just as we think about the calendaring, so we don't have, you know, six school board members at one and none at the other or?
Uh, just one note I'd like to add, I think, um, I, on that conversation, I think maybe I would, I, I don't want to phrase this. Not having, like, every-
Don't try and say it.
Right, okay.
What were you trying to say, Nick?
No, 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 no. I, I just think, I think limiting the num, like, the amount of board members and adults at the meetings is probably a little bit more help, is helpful, just so the students don't feel, we're, we're there to get there and put it in their voice. So I think, I, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to say like, maybe not having every single board member attend every single meeting might be, I think that's a good way to go. You know what I mean?
I think there's a balance.
Right.
I, I think it's a great point of, and that's why I was asking the intentionality because I also don't want to be like, well, no board member showed up, they don't want to hear, they don't want to hear us. And I, I think we need to be, so if, yeah, two board members or one board member's there and they're going to report back to everybody else, we need to be clear, it's not-
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so-
I think that's a good number.
So I just want to be clear that the way that we've outlined, uh, this entire process, um, is, is divided into three phases, right? So we're, so essentially looking at phase one at the end of this month, which is going out to every school community, uh, and we're, we've been working with our principals, uh, and their, uh, school leadership to identify students, bring awareness, bring, you know, advertise the, these meetings. So that's phase one. So again, come all that's interested in this conversation, uh, let's unpack it, let's have conversations, uh, in those, you know, an hour and a half, two-hour sessions. Um, one of the requests that we will make of students and, uh, in partnership with their principals is to identify, uh, a small group of, uh, of students, uh, from those schools, um, who can continue the dialogue and the conversation about specifically SROs, uh, with members of the board, with members of the senior leadership, uh, the mayor's office, et cetera, et cetera. And so those will, will, will happen in, in the month of March, uh, into, uh, April, um, at least the, the way that we've proposed the, the timeline. Uh, and so that, again, those will, you can imagine a group of, you know, 20 students, um, and maybe another, you know, six or seven, eight adults, um, kind of hashing it out and having conversations. Um, and so they, they'll, they're serving as representatives of their schools, uh, and then, you know, their responsibility will be to take back that to those school communities. Phase three, we'll go back once again, um, and, and, you know, schedule meetings with every school community to, uh, to really give a, a full download of what took place in between the first time we met with them in February and, and, and then. So, uh, so it's a, it's a, it is an extended timeline, if you will, but if we are to do really student voice, uh, in an authentic way, I think we have to let, allow for that time to, to, to go, go by, right? So, um, so I really encourage, again, we'll, we'll ensure that the board is fully engaged or a subset of the board, um, is engaged, uh, throughout the different phases. Um, so you are all hearing directly from the students, uh, and it's not our interpretation of what we hear. So again, we'll, we'll make sure that there are enough vehicles and enough ways in which you can, uh, hear directly from, from students.
So I appreciate that there'll be a whole series of engagement opportunities to hear our students out. So as a next step, I'll suggest just individual board members let both Jonathan and our board manager, Roseanne, know, uh, what their preferences are to RSVP on and we'll let you know, um, to make sure we're, we're covering and spreading out ideally a board representative at each one of these sessions, but certainly less than a quorum.
Yeah, definitely. I, I will send tonight a, um, a Google sheet where you all can log in and just maybe do a, I can attend this one and then we'll, we'll coordinate, um, you know, to make sure that, that we have enough board representation there.
Thank you. Thanks for sending that up.
So I've said it before, I'm going to-
Like straight out of Looney Tunes.
Yeah. But he, but he, that's all. Uh, said before, I'll say it again, I think counselors, school counselors need to be part of the conversation with students. Student voice absolutely essential. And for adults, students, whoever, say, more counselors, less cops, people need to know, again, adults, all of us, what are the role from counselors? What are the roles they play? What are the roles they don't play? And I think that is really essential to this conversation.
Sure. So similarly, I mean, so the, the question was around student voice.
APs and principals.
Right, student voice. Um, and we're also looking to develop in partnership with, uh, the Office of School Performance, really ways in which we can engage, uh, the adults in the, in the schools. Uh, so principals, AP, you know, APs, et cetera. Um, we've had a, a number of, of school principals, uh, reach out, uh, you know, wanting to share their, their opinion and their perspective as, uh, site administrators. Again, so we'll make sure that those adults also have an opportunity to lend their voice, uh, into the conversation. But, um, again, I think this first stage here is around student voice.
And the board, uh, can probably, it's fair to say, expect a summary of all the themes that emerge from, uh, these, these sessions with, with our students in the same way we just shared with the board, our community engagement sessions with the Benson and multipathway programs as well.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to have the last word. Um, so Paul Anthony and I attended the National Association of School Boards Advocacy Institute, uh, 10 days ago, um, where we both got sick, but aside from that, um, it was a, a meeting, a nationwide meeting, um, and the explicit focus was, um, lobbying Congress to reauthorize, um, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, and not only to reauthorize it, but to actually fund it for a change. Um, I know, what a concept. Um, so, uh, it was, uh, it, it was a very large assembly, uh, what, about 500 people from all over the country. Um, there was a pretty large Oregon delegation, um, I think it was 22 people. And we, uh, we divvied it up and we managed to meet with the entire, um, Oregon congressional delegation, um, to, to advocate for reauthorization and additional funding. Um, and in addition, we took the opportunity to talk about all kinds of other things. Um, and, um, I think it was a, um, I think we had a receptive audience from the Oregon delegation. Um, and, um, the reauthorization of IDEA will likely take some time, but, um, there is a lot of energy around, um, uh, I think for the first time, it sounds like there's some energy around actually increasing the funding. Um, so, uh, I think everybody needs to stay tuned on this and we'll, we'll keep you posted of any action items that might come out of this in the future.
That's great. Good to hear.
Okay, anything else? All right. Um, the next meeting of the board will be a work session on February 19th, 2019. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on February 26th, 2019. Uh, thank you all for hanging in there till 10:10 and meeting is adjourned.